Okay, is everyone ready? We'll get started, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. The time is 9:00 a.m. We'll turn this meeting over to our city administrator for the agenda this morning. We have six members present and one absent, so we do have a quorum today. Britt?
Thank you. We have no appearances scheduled today, so the first item on the agenda is a resolution to hire a patrol officer.
So moved.
A move to approve by Council Motley, is there support?
Support.
By Council Bachsneider, is there any further discussion? Budgeted item, hearing seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Next item is a request to approve the lateral transfer and hire of a patrol officer for the Virginia Police Department.
Moved.
Move to approve by Council Paulson, is there support?
Support.
By Council Bachsneider, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Number four is a request from Public Works for the Public Safety Facility to purchase the John Deere, it's actually a skid steer, but it's called the Compact Track Loader, 325G, at a cost of $106,975.
This is a budgeted, excuse me, Mayor?
Not budgeted. We have a discussion about this, and we have representatives from the Public Safety Center and also Public Works here to talk about.
Assistant Chief Jonison, did you have something you want to talk about with respect to this item, and that's on the agenda? Chief Jonison from the Fire Department, AMS, and Chief Fredrickson, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Yeah, I guess, we have questions as well, we've, you know, that FFE budget, you know, we have no idea where that's at. Obviously, if there's a lot of funds and we're looking for a lot of enhancements, we'd absolutely love this piece of apparatus there. However, in the last few weeks, we bombarded Britt with different enhancements, thanks to your patience with us, Britt, on that. That would take priority to us over a piece of equipment we couldn't even use at that facility. So yeah, just here to get more info on that. Do we have that budget?
Not yet, no.
Some of those, we have about 14 floors on the Fire Department side that are bare concrete that haven't been finished. So we're waiting for quotes on epoxy flooring and LVT flooring. We have an electrical change in our, what would be area where we fill our SCBA bottles, our breathing air on the back. They didn't initially put the right electricity in there, so we need three phases. We're waiting for the electricians to get back with a quote on that. Chief said, yeah, we have hydrants that need to be adjusted and changed. There's a lot up in the air right now, and personally, from the Fire Department side, we're just asking for this table and we figure out what we have left in the budget before we go and spend money on a skid steer when there's other things for the fire police that might be needed, or even a higher priority than found in the wintertime.
Who made this request?
Not us.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, I understand, the, thank you, Chief and Assistant Chief, for your comments with respect to the purchase of this loader. The people who will be operating this loader will be the people from the Public Works Department, so as far as snow removal goes, they did their responsibility, obviously. And so I think, you know, how efficiently can that snow be removed from that facility determines on what equipment that's available. Because this request became, came from Jim Rosvidt, our Public Works Director, we may want to hear from him, he's sitting in the back room, but does anybody have any questions or comments about this before? I asked Jim to come forward. And I know this is a piece of equipment that's used for not just snow removal there elsewhere. Jim, did you have anything you'd like to add to this request? Jim Rosvidt, our Park and Public Works Director, Jim, thank you.
Morning. I just brought it to the attention that, you know, we came back to who's going to maintain this building and how are we going to maintain it? I've asked this question for two years. Here I am, two years later, and snow's about to fall. Doesn't matter to me, I mean, we don't have the capabilities to do the work, we can't do the work. I'm shorthanded already, we're adding again. My department's taking on more responsibility every time we turn around, and we're doing it with fewer people. I've been without employees, positions, things haven't been filled, and it's snowballing, so to me, it doesn't matter. But this is our recommendation for the location for us to even be to go down there and take care of what we need to take care of, so.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Questions, Council Motley?
Do we have any money anywhere for this?
It wasn't budgeted for, but we certainly could find a purchase somewhere.
I mean, I would be interested to see if we could come up with funding for this, if it's, if you can find something somewhere. I, we're, I know you're short people, and so that's less people you might be paying, I don't know if you can find something out of different budgets, but.
You will allow me to have till next Tuesday to figure out something?
I'd be interested, thank you.
Council Paulson?
Thank you, I guess that's what my question would be, do we have a balance in what we have left in our contingency fund?
To update it from the last meeting, last committee of the whole meeting, but it's 1,000 or so.
Okay.
So it's pretty healthy, I mean, it's, we still have quite a bit there, and we might be able to find some other parts of departments, because I think Jim's original plan with this, when he mentioned that he wanted to get this, was it would also be used in the summer at other locations. It would be used throughout the city, doing other things rather than just snow removal at the Public Safety Facility.
Yeah, right now, we have two units between us and the park, and we could definitely use a third. We have all the attachments now, or a lot of the attachments, so it's something that would be utilized. Plus, now that we've been doing alleys again with, since the steam's gone out, there's a lot more use for those, that type of piece of equipment. The snow has to be hauled out of the alley and loaded out, where it used to melt, or there was a hotspot where you could put it to. But unfortunately, everybody's built garages, put up fences, put gardens in their yards, so there's no place for that snow to come, to go, even when people are shoveling their aprons or their approaches, so everything's got to be kind of picked through and hauled out of there.
Okay, thank you, Council Paulson?
So, quick follow-up, Jim, so the next item is the tires from Taconite Tire, and you also stated that you were down some people, so do you think you have some room with your, with salaries or in your personnel, part of your budget, in, like, if they, if we haven't been paying people, is that a possibility that he's got some money there?
I would hope so, but also, we've spent more on concrete and blacktop this year. We've had a lot of repairs that have really, and that's starting to open up more and more, so those costs are going up, but there are some costs that have come down, so.
So maybe I would just suggest if you could maybe, Britt, look into all, in any scenarios or options?
Hundred percent.
Thank you, thanks, Jim.
Yeah, I think if you could come up with that information, Britt, for our council meeting for next Tuesday, I think it's prudent that we move forward with this. Council Motley?
Quick segue, you guys did work across the street on my neighbor's property, and he's extremely grateful. You guys did a great job, thank you.
Yeah, and that's another one, you know, that Midway's been neglected, it needs a lot of attention because it's a ledge rock all through there, so it pours water through there, so it pushes everything up, and, you know, once we open that can of worms, it doesn't want to seem to close now either, so.
So, real quickly, the water line situation midway, has it, is it still the same? As far as water lines and the depth and those kind of things, and running the water on a regular basis in order to keep them freezing?
Um, yeah, we've been, you know, working that way, but we've had a lot of, you know, you just get runoff from that hillside because it's all ledge rock there.
Right.
So it runs just under the blacktop and the concrete, well then it wants to heave that blacktop and the concrete during the freezing of the thaw, so.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate that, thank you for that explanation. Council Freely?
I would make a motion to move the resolution for the purchase of the John Deere Compact Track Loader to further discussion and potential approval at the council meeting.
Move by Council Freely, is there support? Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Johnson, further discussion. Council Biondich, and then over to Council Paulson, Council Biondich?
I would be interested in looking at how this would be financed before we move it completely, thank you.
Yeah, I think the purpose is to have, hopefully, all that information available for the next council meeting, if not, we'll have to delay that. Thank you, Council Biondich, Council Paulson?
Thank you, and so in the resolution, it's, it's got the base cost and then the attachments, and do we need all those attachments? Like, if we can't come up with all the money, Jim, to get this, do we need all those attachments?
Um, I think we could maybe get by, we've, we've been talking with the park, the sweeper attachment, we, they do have an older one that we're going to convert over to these two machines, it's not as wide, it's not as efficient, but it might work for the time being, also with a blower, we're not sure on the scenarios on how that snow's going to lay out, or how that northwest wind's going to lay in into that, so we could maybe hold off on that also.
So I guess, move that, I guess if we can find the budget, okay, but if not, we might have an option, or we might be able then to not get all of the attachments?
Yeah, I would recommend probably the machine itself and the push, the push blade for it.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Sure. Thank you, Council Paulson. Council Biondich?
Thank you, just one, one follow-up question. So when, when this piece of equipment is purchased, if it comes out of the contingency fund, it does not come out of anybody's budget, correct? Because I just don't want to put anything more on the public safety side of this, thank you.
Thank you, Council Biondich, any other questions? Council Freely?
Britt, did you say there's additional FFE that could be appropriated for that as well, combined with the contingency?
There could be, and that's what we were talking about, there's, what Crowe Anderson's doing right now is the last-minute things that you always find in a building, that we forgot an outlet, they forgot whatever it might be, and what Crowe Anderson's been doing is they've been using all of their contingency right now, because they have a construction contingency, and then we have a contingency, so they were trying to spend all theirs down first, and then they're going to give me a budget of what's left to be done and what's left in our funds, and then we can discuss from there.
And then, one last question, Mayor. Is this something that would be stored at the Public Safety Facility or Public Works?
During the winter, it'd be stored at Public Safety, and during the summer, it would be utilized between Public Works and the park.
And there's space for a storage of this equipment?
Yeah, on the yard.
That's another concern, too. I don't know the size of this, is this like a little Bobcat-type thing, or?
That's exactly what it is, and it's probably 10 feet by 6 foot. You know, you don't need the attachments on it when it's inside.
Council Motley?
Britt, is it possible you can have all that information by next week? Everything?
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Biondich?
And one last question for those occupying that Public Safety Building, all of their needs will be met from the contingency fund before it would go towards something like this?
That's my goal, yes.
I mean, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be shortchanging or what your needs are for that building.
That's my goal, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we don't want that, yeah, okay. Thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Council Paulson?
I just wanted to, I guess, maybe clarify which contingency fund, I wasn't talking about construction contingency, I was talking about the city contingency, yeah, so it shouldn't affect.
No, it shouldn't affect them.
If we do have money in the city contingency, that's the balance I'm looking for.
We do, and we still have FFE, and that's kind of like I said, that Crowe Anderson's trying to spend all theirs first, because they're under contract for that dollar amount, and then they'll come back and start working on ours.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And I told Sean, please go ahead and use yours first, and then we'll come back and work on ours from there, that's totally fine with us.
Okay, and then, I would, I mean, I don't want to support this resolution the way it is read, because it's got the whole attachments in there, but, I mean, I'll, I'll support it to move it forward for all that, the rest of the information, but if we can't afford it, I don't, I mean, what's being moved forward here is this resolution that's in the packet. So I'll agree to that, but I probably, unless we get all that information, I don't necessarily know that I'll agree to the whole entire resolution as it's written today. But I will agree to move it forward so we can get that information.
Okay. Pam?
Thank you. I can update the resolution to list each item separately, and that way you can choose which items you want to include in the purchase.
Very good, thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you. Thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion?
When you.
Council Freely, and then over to Council Motley. Council Freely?
I just want to remind everybody that when it snows hard in the city of Virginia, the highest priority for snow removal will be at that facility, so we're going to have to have something that's available to remove that first, before moving on to other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Motley?
Pam, when you update that resolution, can you put, like, highlight what he had recommended as what, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, it has been moved and supported to move this forward with some adjustments for the next city council meeting, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Bachsneider?
No.
Freely?
Aye.
Coffee?
Aye, motion passed at 6:01, thank you.
Jim, don't walk away.
Next item.
The next one is the purchase of tires and rims for the 2015 John Deere 644 loader.
Tires are 10 years old, they need to be replaced, that loader's been using significantly, I looked at the tires, they're in bad shape, so FYI. Counsel?
I will move the approval to purchase tires for equipment.
Council Johnson moves to approve the purchase of the tires for the 2015 John Deere 644 loader at a cost of $22,702.56, supported by Council Freely. Further discussion, Council Paulson, and then over to Council Biondich.
Thank you, I feel like this might be the question we all have, is where is this money going to be coming from?
At their budget right now, and there is a, full spots where they have some funds that would equal the 2015, not from one line, it's from multiple lines.
Multiple lines?
Yeah, but it's all in with Public Works.
If we have the availability, I'm fine, comfortable with that.
Yep, I'm positive we can pull that out of, like I said, multiple spots, but we will get there.
Thank you. Was that your same question, Council Biondich? Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Number six is a request to approve the 2026 contract fee for people's service for operation of the wastewater treatment plant and to authorize the mayor to sign.
Moved.
Moved by Council Paulson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Bachsneider, is there any further discussion? So this is for how long? One more year, then it has to be negotiated, is that correct? And what is this fee for the public certification? For one year?
This is the maintenance of the wastewater plant, monthly.
And the monthly rate is? Thank you, Pam.
$30,561, up from $29,414.
Okay, thank you. Council Freely, further discussion?
Had we not had a conversation previously about moving off of the CPI as a, as the increase, to negotiate that to something less than the 2.9 or 3% that it's at?
Mayor?
Pam?
Yes, when their contract comes up, that could be a negotiating item, but their contract is not up till the end of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? I would hope after the end of this 2026, this CPI issue came about when they first, when we first approved this, the big concern was that the CPI is going to be higher than a regular percentage increase. There was a former city council who pushed for the CPI, and now we're in a situation where we're paying more than we ever should be paying for that. So it has been moved and supported for one more year, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Number seven is a request to approve the quote from Knox for a narcotic med vault for the Sprint Medic Units.
And this is fully funded by the Sprint Medical Program? Thank you.
Moved.
Move to approve by Council Freely, is there support?
Support.
By Council Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Request to approve the resolution for the purchase of items for outfitting the Sprint Medic Vehicles, and they amount to $17,125.90 each.
Moved. Move to approve by Council Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Freely, further discussion, this is also fully grant-funded as well. Any further discussion? Council Paulson?
Thank you, so I'm reading the resolution, and it says they're each $17,125, and is there, how many tajhos? Two? Is that correct? Okay, so do we need to reflect the total in that resolution? Does we just?
It does say $17,125.90 each.
And then that, okay, so then, that's, that's covered though, the total is covered by the grant, is that correct?
Yes, everything's covered by the grant, correct, yes, that is correct, Council Paulson.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight is communication, I'm sorry, item number nine is communication from the Labor Management Committee regarding adoption of the proposed vision statement and mission statement for the city. And at this time, they're just looking for the council to review them, and we will bring back any recommendations for changes from staff or the council to our next meeting on October 30th, and then ask for the council to approve this on November 10th.
Very good, thank you. This is not something you want to vote on, is it?
You don't have to today, no.
Okay, Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, as a member, I think it's appropriate that we read the proposed mission statement and vision statement. The city of Virginia mission statement, "To be a thriving regional hub where tradition meets innovation. We strive to make Virginia, Minnesota, a place of natural beauty, strong community values, and economic vitality. A welcoming destination for families, entrepreneurs, and visitors alike. Here, people live well, work hard, and play often." City of Virginia proposed a vision statement, "The city of Virginia, Minnesota, envisions a thriving, inclusive, and forward-thinking community. We are committed to fostering a safe, welcoming, and enriching environment that honors our heritage, supports our residents and businesses, and promotes well-being for generations to come." And I just want to take this few moments to thank the committee for working on this collaboratively. A reminder that the members of this group are two elected officials, two administrators, and two folks from each of our unions in the city, so it does represent all of the employees within the city of Virginia. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Britt?
Item number 10 is discuss the special assessments for 10th Avenue West, 13th Street South, 6th Avenue West, and 17th Streets.
Okay, thank you. I will start. So there's a precedent set for us to take a look at what the costs associated with the assessments that were levied. I know this is at different times in our society, and at times within our city, our budget, any decision we make with respect to a reduction in this, if we're considering that, is it's going to be. going to be spread over, over the rest of the city. This assessment doesn't just go away. Other people who do not live in that residential area who are, are directly affected by will have to pay extra money on their property taxes. That's the way it is. That's what the law says. But that being said, my suggestion is, and we've given this a lot of thought over the last couple of weeks, moving forward, and what's fair and equitable, and the strain that's going on, on the residents with respect to all these things, the steam conversion, the property taxes increases, all the, the challenges that residents have with respect to the assessment. And it's on business, too, as well, but mostly on the residential properties. So I'm going to suggest that we, we, and I'm not making a motion this time, I'll look for a discussion from the council, that we reduce the, the assessment from the 40% that was outlined by the presentation by S E H to 20%, which is the minimum required under the state law. In addition to that, I just want to reiterate that if that is the case, it doesn't actually cut your, your, your assessment in half. There's a formula that's used for that, but I would suggest we talk about reduce that to 20%. In addition to that, those people who have dual assessments on an avenue and a street in accordance with the way the guidelines are established, that, that one be waived and the other be applied. In other words, if one assessment is $7,000 on one, on the avenue side, and it's $5,500 on the street side, that the $5,500 one be waived, and they pay the bigger amount on the avenue side. Those are the suggestions I think we should be talking about today to help offset the costs associated with it. And any additional applications of assessments will have to be spread out for the rest of the committee. Those are the suggestions I have moving forward, and I look forward for some additional discussion with respect to this. Counselor Paulson first.
Thank you, Mayor. So do we know what that total dollar amount would be? And Britt, would that have to be, like, if we go from 40 to 20, does that have to be applied for the additional, for the 2026 levy? Or does that go on a 2027 levy assessment, debt levy?
The 27 levy.
Okay, so that's 27. And then I would agree that the lesser, whatever the assessment, if you're on an avenue and a street, I would vacate one of those. And the other question that I did have, Britt, was the interest rate. And I feel like it should be whatever the bond interest rate was to the city.
Which is 5%.
I thought it was lower than 5%. It's, it's 5%? The previous one was lower, so this is, this was at 5. Need to lower our interest rates. So that's a pass-through. It's not anything additional, is that correct? Okay. That was my only other suggestion, was to lower it to the, to meet, to match the bond interest rate, but I didn't realize it was at 5.
And I think that 5% is the rate we could get on the bond. That was the lowest rate we could get on the bond. If we could get a lower rate, we certainly would try to do that, but unfortunately, the way the industry was, it was the 5%. So, so, okay, any other questions, comments, actions by the council? Counselor Biondich?
And I would agree. I think lowering it to the 20% and putting it on the levy, as we all use the streets in this town, and we've done this previously, so it's not all on the homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. Any other questions, comments, concerns, or actions by the council? Counselor Freely?
I would make that motion to set the special assessment for 20% versus the 40 that was presented, and to eliminate one of the assessments on corner properties. That's that.
Okay, so the one assessment on the corner, well, corner property, but which one? The, where the owner paid the highest amount on, on the two, or the lowest?
In the past, they've been charged with the highest. I, I've lived on a corner, so I know that, so.
Okay. And that would be part of your motion?
Yes.
Motion by Counselor Freely, is everybody understand the motion? Pam, you got the motion correct? Okay, the motion, I believe, is to reduce the assessments to the residential businesses by 20%. In addition to that, those who have dual property assessment values would be assessed at, by one at the higher rate, and the other would not be assessed. This has been moved and supported. I'm sorry, yeah, please do.
So you're, you're saying the 20% minimum that's required by state statute?
Yes, correct. Yes. Yeah, yeah, thank you, Britt. Yes, 20% minimum that's required by state statute. Thank you. Oh, that's important to have that in there. Further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
I was just going to support.
Okay, moved by, was it moved by Counselor Freely, and supported by Counselor Paulson? Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to point out and remind people that point three of the resolution is the city council has adopted policy which allows for the assessment deferments for elderly people and for all other persons who fall within economic hardship criteria. A deferment assessment is not given, but is postponed until such time the property owner either elects to resume making the annual installments as certified or no longer meets the economic hardship criteria or sells the property. Persons interested in deferring assessments must apply each year to have a following year assessment installed deferred. After 10 years, no further applications are necessary, and the deferred installment will remain permanently deferred without accrual of additional interest until such time that the deferred assessment is voluntarily paid or the property is sold. The most current deferent criteria as passed by council resolution can be requested from the city clerk and a copy provided to the requister. So again, this is for all those folks who can't afford it or are temporarily having some challenges. They need to take a little action, and it will not show up on their assessment until later time.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out, Counselor Johnson. We did make that clear at the assessment hearing as well, that they have the opportunity to apply for that hardship and deferment with respect to that. So, and I think some have already applied for that.
Well, I have handed out the application.
You've, Pam has handled the application for that, so thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. When will we get the letters?
Come on up, sir. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to re-figure that out.
I'm Nick Peppa-Jack.
Yeah, yeah. Your name is?
Nick Peppa-Jack.
Mr. Peppa-Jack, yes.
I'm just wondering, when will we have the town's availability?
Well, if you can leave, we'll leave your name and number, your email with our city clerk. Once we, once we figure out the formula, we'll let you, so as soon as that, that formula is refactored in.
Originally, was it October we were talking about?
Yes, and then we have to have it into the county by November 30th, so you have till November 30th to get it in. So we should have the letters out soon.
Going down in November now?
Yeah, yeah. The letters should be out. We have to wait till the council approves it next week. So the letters will go out probably the week after that, and then you'd have till November 30th.
See the letter up with effect.
The actual dollar amount, yep.
Yeah, that was in the name. I mean, I, I would.
Okay.
Yeah. You want to be here, yeah.
Understandably so, Mr. Peppa-Jack.
Yeah.
You can certainly call as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Peppa-Jack. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Before we go any further, I just want to recognize, I should have done it earlier, that we, in the room, we have Teresa Appelwick, the president of the wrenching chamber. Thanks for coming to the city council meeting this morning. And once again, real quickly, what a great gala it was, 2025. It was wonderful. Thank you again for the very gracious hosting as you move forward with that, so thanks for all that. Okay, what's the next item on the agenda?
Item on the agenda is consider an offer for the purchase of real property owned by the city at 915-929-17th Street North. And this portion of the meeting may be closed as per Minnesota statute 13D04 subdivision 3C1 for real estate negotiations.
Move to close.
Are we going to close? Move to close by Counselor Paulson?